Over here. This is the sheet to sign up?
Yes.
You need to put your full, your complete name, print please, your complete address, and your topic of conversation.
Okay.
But he's reserved, these first two are reserved.
Is this person here?
That's me, that's my husband, he has a fractured kneecap so he can't stand long.
Let me make sure that I can read it. This is Felicia and this is Huey Thomas. What can we say? Just help yourself. You need to put, print please, your full name.
Alright, I'm gonna put Gary's name.
Your complete address.
Yeah, first and roses are both.
Gary, how you spell your last name? Cause you're before me.
P E L P H.
Oh, I'm sorry.
P, P E L?
P H R E Y.
Okay, address?
Box fourteen ten Smyrna, three double oh eight one.
Now they will be calling in this order.
Right. So it's you?
And your comment?
Okay.
Your, this is your subject.
Alright, I'm gonna skip the lead for Ben, cause he's after Gary. And I'm gonna put this here.
And this is Alicia?
Uh huh, Alicia Newton.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that I can read your name.
Oh, you have to read all of it?
No, and the mayor will have to read your name. If I can read it, he'll be able to read it.
Okay. Okay, can we go to the next page on basic, cause Gary, um, Ben needs to be right there, thank you.
What are we doing now, what's going on? With that space?
Who needs to be right?
Something?
She said something, Ben.
Ben? Ben, put your name right there, man.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
And I need your full name, your complete address.
Been through this rodeo before, this rodeo before, this is, this is not my first rodeo. Thank you so much.
Just trying to do my job, sir.
Okay.
Subject matter.
Subject matter, and your complete address.
Okay. They call us, right?
The mayor, where are you?
The mayor, where, okay.
Thank you, sir, thank you, sir.
It's a live mic.
That's why I shut up.
There you go. Complete name, printed please.
Always.
Thank you. Your complete name, printed please, complete address, and your topic of conversation.
Rex.
Rex, Georgia, okay. Thank you.
So if you need to state it otherwise, that's, that's.
Thank you. Hey, how you doing? Your complete, printed your complete name? Thank you. Your complete address, city, state, please. Good, how are you? And your cuban.
You are a citizen?
I'm sorry?
You are a council?
No, I'm a city clerk. Just facilitate information for them.
Oh, okay.
Your complete address. Is this Ory?
Dre.
Oh, Dre, D. Hey, good afternoon. Your complete name, printed please. I'll have to give this to the mayor, let him read it. This to make it easy? Including your city and state, I assume you live in Georgia? And your topic. Your full, complete name. Wait for it, including your city and state.
Important that you speak after Gary, and if I'm in that spot, then I'll just move down to the bottom of the list. Because it's, it's important that the flow.
Flow, flow?
The flow, flows. Please be following me. So, just asking to substitute you for, cause I think I'm behind Gary. Okay, ma'am, did you flip over the sheet, uh, please? Yeah, there you go, thank you so much. Here's Gary, here's where I am, why don't you, uh...
He'd like me to substitute for him?
Well, because we have a presentation and she's a part of it, okay, she just signed it on top of me. I'll, I'll drop out if I need.
If that's not okay, if that's not possible, I can just go.
Well, no, good, I, no, I'll be last.
I just can't.
Okay, well, what?
The mayor's gonna read this order, and if I scratch it out, he's not gonna be able to read it.
Yeah, no worries. God is in the house, good things will happen.
Okay, very good.
God is in the house. Thank you. Ooh, somebody's with the same last name.
Your complete address, please.
Yep.
Complete name? Your full name, complete address, and your topic of conversation.
I got a lot of personalities, can each one of them say something?
Everybody has to sign the sheet.
Everyone has three minutes to speak.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Why is it cut down to three minutes?
That's just our policy. The, the mayor will explain it to you, but each person can speak.
You just gotta only say three minutes. What if you go three minutes and fifteen seconds?
What do you need my address for?
We, we require it for you to speak.
Why?
It's, it's just policy. City Hall policy.
That's a terrible policy.
My man, life is gone, this is happening.
I feel like, I feel like they're gonna like bombard and stuff after you.
Is this a law that I only can speak three minutes? Is there a law that I only can speak three minutes?
This is the, this is our council policy that you can...
Is it a law?
It's a city policy.
No, I'm just asking, ma'am, I'm just asking you, is it a law?
A law, no.
Okay.
It's a, it's a policy of our city council.
Some that somebody made up?
Our city council, yes.
But it is okay if you go a few seconds over, I mean, if you don't have a watch, I mean, how do you know if it's, how do you know if you only... Oh, and then I tell you?
You'll know when your time is, I mean, we do this for public hearings and, uh, citizens input.
Oh, okay.
So it's not just for this.
Okay.
We do this every single meeting.
Okay. It's mandatory to put your address on here? What is this address for?
We require an address.
Why? For what now? What's the purpose of it?
He requires a...
No, I'm saying, what's the purpose of the address?
So that we have your name in there.
Cause I seem like it's avering my, evading my personal to know my address. I swear.
How you doing, ma'am? Alright, sir, fine, thank you. It'll be fine. You can read there?
I can.
Outstanding. I don't know if you can read the last one, you think you get that? Do I have to do it over? Fudge, there you go, yeah. That's cool? Yes, ma'am, yeah, that's good? Alright, alright.
It's not, the mayor has to read it.
Alright, that'll be fine.
If I can read it, hopefully he can.
Amen, thank you very much. Okay, and that was this topic, okay? Topic of... Alright, let's see who we go from here. Alright, thank you very much. This your pen, right?
Huh, yeah, another personality wanna sign up. I got a lot of personalities, I figure I come back through the line. No, I'm just kidding, that's just a joke, no, it's just a, no, just a joke. No, I was just kidding. I don't want you thinking I'm bipolar or nothing.
Are you signing yourself, self up again?
No, I just wanna use my business address, if that's okay, versus this address.
Oh, yeah.
I'd rather use my office, so I'll do that. What's the purpose of the address?
The mayor requires us.
The mayor?
The mayor and council.
This reserves for press?
It, they're both reserved, I'm not sure.
Four, four, four? Press, whatever. Pardon me? Oh, you mean like, uh, department people, is that right? Okay, gotcha, okay, great, great, okay.
Can you print your name, and your full address, and your topic of conversation? Can I read this? This is...
Ontario.
Ontario, okay. Riggins?
Yes.
What city? Decatur, I've seen you a couple of pictures. I need your complete name, printed, please. That's me?
Oh, I already signed, I appreciate it. Oh, this one. I put the wrong estimate.
Hi. Rea Boynton CBS Radio Atlanta, how are you doing? Good to meet you, but how long do the meetings normally last?
You know, they last, they're all...
If I can use the jingle, it'll be right here, if you can use the jingle. I'll just pass it down.
It just depends on, you know, how many meetings it takes. Thank you.
I got a question for you.
Anybody else need a jingle?
Thank you.
This is, this is a national story, pretty much.
Last call for the jingle, it's called...
You'd have to go and explain to Jamie and Reggie exactly what you're trying to do.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If, if there's anyone that would like to sign up to speak, uh, I need to, there's a sign up sheet up here, uh, you'll need to sign up. Uh, I'm getting ready to pick the... Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Okay. What's that word I wanna say?
Thank you.
As we get closer to the meeting starting, I know that you had opportunity to, uh, sign up if you wanted to speak, uh, at the end of the, at the end of the meeting, so if anybody else that wants to sign up, now's the time to do it.
In what? It's gonna be a while, isn't it?
Heather, Heather. Have you got a... One of the signing sheets?
Let's see. Martin Luther King's birthday is on the January 18th. The last two meetings was... Okay.
All right, wasn't Ray Johnson? I didn't even know about this. All right, y'all ready? I got 7:30. All right, I'm... I'm getting ready to start. I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, February 15th, 2016. Want to welcome everyone. Tonight, we have with us Pastor Carick Butler of the Faith Christian Center at 3059 South Cobb Drive, who will come forth this time, give our invocation and also lead us in the place of flag. So would everyone please rise? Let's bow our heads in prayer. Father, we thank you because you are good and your mercy endures forever. We invite your presence and your spirit into this place. We ask that you lead, guide, and direct. We pray over our city and every citizen, every person. We pray that your blessing rest upon them, that you grant them wisdom and health and prosperity and peace and wholeness. We ask for our city to be a shining city on the hill that other cities in Georgia and throughout the U.S. looks to for how to operate and how they live in these days. We thank you for all these things and we give you glory. In Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. I'm a patient man. We have a... We have a published agenda and we're gonna stick by that. I'm a very patient man. I'm a very patient man. But we have an agenda that we're gonna go by tonight. Have a proclamation under the mayor's report. Well, there are no agenda changes. Under the mayor's report, I do want to mention this. That this is... A lot of folks may be here because you think we may or may not vote on something tonight that you're interested in. But our published agenda does not include any promotional approvals at all from this council. So if you're here for that, then there's not gonna be any action taken by this board. Never has when it comes to promoting public safety. Proclamation in recognition of the Georgia Arbor Day. I think Virginia Davis is here. Corky Welch has got that and he will read that and give that to Virginia.
Virginia, I'll read it and then we can meet down here in just a moment. If my voice will hold out. A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia Arbor Day. Whereas the first Arbor Day was celebrated in 1872 in Nebraska as a special day for planting trees and is grown to thousands of celebrations in communities across our nation each year. And whereas community partners, families, and friends will be joined together at a local Arbor Day ceremonies to recognize the benefits of trees and urban forests. And whereas trees reduce the erosion in precious topsoil, cutting heating and cooling costs, cleaning the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business area, and beautify our community. And whereas all the Georgia benefits from forestry, which contributes billions of dollars annually to our state's economy and provides employment for more than 100,000 people. Now, therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim February 19th, 2016, as Arbor Day in Georgia and encourage our citizens to plant trees, thus leaving a legacy for present and future generations. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this the 15th day of February in the year of our Lord, 2016. A. Max Bacon.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for recognizing such an honorable day as Arbor Day. Arbor Day is celebrated across the United States as the last third weekend in April. But in Georgia and other southern states is celebrated this coming Friday because of our growing season. I would like to congratulate Smyrna as celebrating its 13th year as a tree city. It's taken a lot of work and a lot of dedication. We planted a lot of trees. On this Friday, the 19th, we will have a lunch and learn at Bronner Hall from 12:00 noon until 1:00. The speaker will be Dominic Stewart of the Bartlett Tree Experts. He will talk about tree selection, site selection, maintenance, and long-term care for new trees in the urban environment. Reservations are required and we ask that you're interested in coming, to please call the Keith Smyrna Beautiful office or to call Community Development. Thank you again for recognizing such a great day.
Thank you, Virginia. Item 3B in the mayor's report is a performance by David Switaker in Dukes's African Clothing in honor of Black History Month. We're glad that y'all are here, Marilyn.
Mayor, we thank you and the council for allowing us to be here today in honor of Black History Month when we celebrate and we talk about the significance of African-American clothing to Black history and the fashion industry. As many know, that we had the first African-American designer, who is Zelda Valdez, and she designed the Playboard Bunny outfit. But there are many other contributions in which African-American clothing has made to the fashion industry. And we appreciate the fact that Smyrna has its own African-American designer right here in Dukes's. So we want to sing a song for you called "Stand Together" because it talks about diversity and unifying one another.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Can we face you?
All good. I got a camera up there, I think.
We will stand together, stand together, stand together now. We will stand together, stand together, stand together now. We will stand together, stand together, stand together now. We will stand together, stand together, stand together now. We will stand together, stand together, stand together now. We will stand together, stand together, stand together now. We will stand together, stand together, stand together now. We will stand together, stand together, stand together now. We will stand together, stand together, stand together now. We will stand together, stand together, stand together now. Where diversity is not declared as something that should be, but is accepted as our way of life. We will stand together now. It's both others, brave friends, remind us everything where we were spiritually, economically, and to what we stand together now. Regal your humble, elevated to our part to bring about something binding of all things. We will stand together now. We will stand together, stand together, stand together now.
Thank y'all very much. Thank y'all very much. Thank y'all very much.
Ain't nothing happy right now. Nothing. Y'all sitting here like everything's okay? No, absolutely not. Ain't nothing happy right now.
Item 5 on the agenda... Item 5 on the agenda is land issues, zoning, and annexation. A 2016-41. It's a public hearing. It's only a request, Z 16-001. Rezoning with R 15 to R 12 conditional for the construction of the two single-family homes at 0.63 acre tract, land lot 664, 2580 Bates Street, Habitat for Humanity Northwest Metro Atlanta. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning and Zoning Board approved this item with unanimously a vote 7-0. And I ask Community Development Director Ken Sadrith to come forward and provide further details.
Mr. Sadrith, are you ready to give us some background from the...
I am. I want to...
Okay, thank you.
Let me pull up this PowerPoint real quick.
While he's pulling up the information, this is a public hearing. And if there's anyone here that wants to make any public comment concerning this issue, you need to be sworn in to make those comments. Either for... Whether you're for the project or you're against it. Anybody who wants to make any public comment concerning this issue, which is a rezoning. Randy, need a minute for the oath?
I do, sir.
You'll have a seat, David. All right, now, Ken, you can do your...
Thank you, Mayor. What we have in front of you tonight is a request by Habitat to actually split a lot over on Bates Street. Here's the zoning map. The current zoning is R 15. What they are requesting is the ability to split this existing lot into two lots to build two Habitat homes. In order to do that, they are asking for a zoning change from R 15 to R 12 conditional. The coloration on the maps on the screen may be a little bit faded, but R 12 does exist across the street from the subject property. This is the future development map. It will require as part of your approval, which is part of the recommendation, a change from suburban residential to moderate-density residential. But as stated earlier, this is in line with what is across the street. The proposed site plan is shown above showing the two lots. There are two variances associated with this lot. One has to do with the lot width. It would drop from 85 feet to 75 feet. And the other has to do with the minimum house size, which they are requesting at 1,500 square feet, which is a reduction from the 1,900 that would be in this district. The lot areas themselves, because of the rezoning change to R 12, is in compliance. So there's only two variances necessary along with the lot split. There's a five-foot right-of-way dedication because Bates Street is only a 40-foot wide right-of-way. So anytime we have this opportunity, we will split the difference on what is left. And in this case, an additional five feet will be dedicated. This is the area for the proposed stormwater management for both of the homes. There is a 35-foot front yard setback as well as a 10-foot setback and a 30-foot rear setback with this proposal. The requested variances... The requested variances as part of this conditional zoning, I've already mentioned, 85 feet to 75 feet, as well as a reduction from the 1,900-square-foot minimum floor area requirement to 1,500 square feet. These are the proposed elevations. If you recall, those of you who were on council previously, we had a similar request on Patmel Road. And again, these are very similar homes. This is in Ward 3, but actually Andrea in Ward 2, I understand, is handling the request tonight. These are pictures of the subject property and pictures of the adjacent properties, the staff recommendation, as well as the planning commission recommendation, which Mr. Jones has already indicated was an approval with a 7-0 vote. I have condensed the standard conditions to just hit the highlights. Again, they deal with the composition of the homes, the stormwater management issue, the underground utility requirement. Any traffic improvements that are needed are the responsibility of the developer. They have to... There's no burying of debris on the site. They do have to follow the tree ordinance, submit landscaping plans, follow landscaping requirements and tree planting requirements. The petitioner, in this case Habitat, has agreed to follow all of those requirements. In addition, there are some special requirements. And as you remember, special requirements are those that deal specifically with the development at hand here. So you do have the front 35 feet, the side of 10, and the rear of 30 feet. They will have a driveway of 22 feet, which is our minimum length. And that would be measured from the back of the sidewalk. Again, I've already mentioned the lot split and that they would meet the minimum requirements of 12,000. Basically, each lot is 13,763 feet. The rest of the special conditions, again, have to do with the minimum floor area, 1,500, as well as the right-of-way, which I illustrated to you. There is a requirement that a five-foot sidewalk with a two-foot grass strip be built along Bates Street. All trees within those limits of disturbance that are not located within the tree protection area must be removed during the land clearing and grading phase of the development. Approval of the subject property is conditioned on the site plan that you have seen, as well as the home shall be in substantial compliance with the elevations submitted. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
This is a public hearing on this. We're not gonna shut it down. We're not gonna shut it down. This is a public meeting. This is a public meeting. This is...
Sir.
Not gonna happen. Not gonna happen. This is representative from...
I'm David McGinnis.
David McGinnis.
I'm the president and CEO of Habitat for Humanity Northwest Metro Atlanta. We're located on Smyrna, on Spring Road. We would appreciate your consideration on building the homes. We'll build them to the codes as you set.
Okay. Make sure that we get him... Those need to be escorted out. Okay. I need to go ahead and... I need to go ahead and... Randy, need to get them out. Everyone, please have a seat. We'd like to... Okay, escort them out. Out. Got to go.
You don't represent Smyrna. And Mr. Snyder, Mr. Stoner, you got that smirk on your face? Meet me in the parking lot.
That shit down. Shut it down. Shut it down. Black lives matter.
No, they turned it off. Hello? Now it's on.
NWA. I got one thing to say. NWA.
He's a public service. He doesn't have to act as a... They need to be worried about all services, not just the public sector, not just corporate America. They need to worry about the group of citizens, the workforce as well. We'll be in every meeting. It's not up for us. It's not up for the conversation. We keep pouring in our faces. So anything that better the community, to bring people together, it's all right. I'm not looking for devices. I'm looking for people that are going to do something for their community, not only black folks, but community. These people didn't represent our community. These cops represent. We got black and white, Hispanic cops. They represent our community. These folks on this podium who can make a difference, who can do their jobs as public servants, they don't recommend representing this entire community.
Are you talking about the race difference?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. And Mr. Stoner, for some reason, his smirk keeps up looking at me all night for some reason. But I like to invite him. We have this new staff, many other guys. You can come to him. Yeah, I'm talking about whoever's on here. Of course, he sees us. That's why.
But what's more so violent than y'all don't care?
Not at all. I just don't like the way he looks at me. I'm a C student. And I don't like his smirk at all. Yeah, kill your kid in your town, your brother, and you owe your taxes. People are angry about this. They're angry about people being citizens, other citizens in the United States. So the only way I can speak on this is to say people are tired. You're going to tell people nice, normal life, after just simply being stopped or tried to stop or calling the police because a dog got away and somebody's dead. It makes no sense. We're the only country that does it.
Very much. They've made some changes. They've passed, they've made some changes. You have to use the cameras, things like that. What do you think?
Well, I see some of the officers have done it. And that's a step in and of itself towards the right direction. However, they need training. We got folks that just get a minimum training, going over the birds, play from the ground. Looking at those birds, I don't know. Yeah, I didn't care about it. I know he's already been promoted, and there's nothing we can do about it. That's not... I don't care about it. But I heard...
Are they coming back?
They can mention it. I don't care about it because I know the man...
Are they coming back?
But my question is why? You on the force for 20 years, and you go out and kill somebody, and then you're promoted. Why did it take you 20 years to get promoted? What is the criteria? I'm not in HR. I don't know what that criteria is. But why does it take you 20 years to kill my son to be promoted? It just doesn't look right. And these people sit up here like it's just another day. It's not. I know they're good police officers. Some of these guys might be good police officers. At the end of the day, one bad one, he may not have been before that day, but he was that day, shot my son and killed him. And then he was beating his wife. So he must not have been that good of a guy.
I go.
I'm a...
I go. I go. I go. Yes, yes, y'all. Yes, y'all. There will be no agenda until we get our agenda. There will be no agenda until we get our agenda. And so we want to... And so we want to make sure that they know our demands. Sis is going to read the demands. We're going to have words from the family, and we're going to peel out because we done here. Business adjourned. Sis, give us a demands.
First and foremost, we want Lieutenant Owens to turn in his weapon, lock him up for murder. We're ordering Chief Lee to rescind the promotion. We want a full investigation by the U.S. Attorney of the Northern District Court of Georgia into the Nicholas Thomas murder. We want a special grand jury with a special prosecutor, not Vic Reynolds, to review all of the evidence. How is it that you can be in fear of your life and shooting from behind the car?
Why were the tires not shot instead of the car? Y'all are trained. Y'all can shoot suspects in legs instead of killing them, but instead, y'all choose to kill them. That goes to y'all training department. Any officer that feels okay working with an officer that will blindly and uncaught would not care about taking someone's child, life, that's bad. And y'all represent that. And that's not good. That's not helping our community. Y'all making our community worse. And it's only going to cause revolt against y'all, not help y'all because y'all don't know how to give justice out. That car tires could have been shot.
Are we going to hear from Ms. Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I see you were a coward today, and you ran back there. You a damn coward. You hear me? You were a coward. You massacred my son, and then you had the decency, indecency, to doggone give Kenneth Owens a promotion, and my son has not even body... Not even a year. Not even a damn year. How disrespectful, Cobb County. Disrespectful.
And y'all, we will be back every other Monday until they make our agenda their agenda. First and third Mondays.
For Black History Month, to my black brothers standing on the front of the black... On the front of the line, what would your mother say? Tell me, what would your mother say this Mother's Day as you take up for someone like you? Someone like you, someone who died like you. What would your mother say when this woman's womb is barren? You should be ashamed of yourself to cover up for murder. Moms demand justice this time. Moms demand justice. We birthed all of you. All of you, those murdered and the murderer. And that's it of shame. Go home and shame this Mother's Day, brothers, unless you stand up for your brothers and what's right. Don't stand behind the badge. Stand with the people. Stand with your mothers. Stand with your mothers this Mother's Day. Stand up and stand up for what's right.
All right, y'all. So we're going to end it, y'all. I go. I go. I go. Yo, we going to end this like this, y'all. Again, every first and third Monday, they intend to do this, and we intend to do this again. Right? And so again, it is our duty to fight for our freedom. It is our duty to win. We must love each other and protect each other. We have nothing to lose but our chains. Meeting adjourned. Let's get home. Good night.
Call this meeting to order. Back again after a break here. Mr. McGinnis, anything else you need to add to the Habitat for Humanity?
No. For the record, sir, I'm David McGinnis. I'm the president of Habitat for Humanity of Northwest Metro Atlanta, located here on Spring Road in Smyrna. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Mike on.
I think that there were a couple of special stipulations on this that you agreed to. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. All the stipulations we have agreed to.
Okay. Well, I'm sure that they're going to be... It's going to be a really nice area and everything, so...
We'll do everything we can to make you proud.
I have a quick question, too. Are there any homes or structures on this property? It didn't look like there were from the pictures.
There had been at one time, but all the foundations, all the houses have been removed, so it's vacant now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Bluestein, if you'll take care of this for Mrs. Nullwich, she was out of town.
No. At this time, then, I would like to make a motion to approve 20... Item 2614-41, a zoning request, Z 16-001, rezoning from R 15 to R 12 conditional for the construction of two single-family homes, 0.63 acre tract, land lot 664, 2580 Bates Street, done by the Habitat for Humanity of Northwest Metro Atlanta.
I'll second the motion.
A motion to second. There's any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 6-0. And again, for the record, Ms. Nullwich is out of town.
Thank you very much.
As well as our city attorney, Scott Kock. All right. Item... Sure I got this right here. Previous license, is that correct? Stand by. Previous license, we have none, right? We got formal business, 782016-94, approval of Ward Two appointment, Parks and Recreation Commission, Irene...
Agree and we.
That's right. To fulfill a two-year term to expire December 2017. That's Ms. Bluestein. Ms. Bluestein, Ward Two.
Okay. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve 2016-94, the approval of Ward Two appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Irene Agree and We, to fulfill the two-year term to expire December 2017.
Second.
A motion to second to approve this two-year appointment. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 6-0. Item 7B under formal business, 2016-98, approval of Ward One appointment to the Smyrna Housing Authority. Antonia Williams, this is a five-year term to expire May 2020. This is Mr. Derek Norton. Mr. Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've gotten to know Antonia over the past several months. She will be a fine addition to the Housing Authority, and I'm pleased to make this appointment. At this time, I make a motion to approve Item 7B, 2016-98, approval of Ward One appointment to the Smyrna Housing Authority. Antonia Williams, this is a five-year term to expire May 2020.
Second. Motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved. One more. It's approved 6-0. Thank you very much. Item 7C under formal business, 2016-99, authorize the city to sell a remnant portion of property owned by the city located in 2975 and 2925 Atlanta Road to Hapton Enterprises for the praise value, authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary... Authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary for the, for the transaction. Mr. Jones, please.
Mayor, this is a continuing process for the action that was taken on February 1st a couple of weeks ago with regard to what termed the Johnquill site. The property was recently rezoned to a mixed-use development, which will include a Publix market in an effort to meet the commitments needed for that. Full-scale development of the site will begin soon. In fact, I think it has already begun. The city owns, as you know, two remnant parcels of the site. A portion of those two parcels were, um, uh, swapped for some property along Glendale Road, and a property swap, and that created two remnant parcels. And the agenda item that is before you is to sell those two remnant parcels. One is approximately fifty-six, what's 5,619 square feet, about a thirteenth of an acre, and the other one is 7,060 square feet, or about a sixteenth of an acre. These parcels are, uh, being sold at the same appraised value as the property that was traded, and the combined total value of those two parcels is $131,227 to Halpern Enterprises.
Uh, this is under, it's Ron Fennel, who chairs the Finance Administration. I know we have someone here from Halpern, Steve West, who's waited, uh...
Mr. West, would you like to say anything? Okay. It is, uh, then my privilege, Mr. Mayor, to, uh, move approval to authorize, 2016-99, authorize the city to sell the remnant portion of property owned by the city located at 2975 and 2925 Atlanta Road to Halpern Enterprises for the appraised value and to authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary for the transaction. Second.
A motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 6-0. And from what I understand, uh, Publix will be, the, I guess we can say Publix, it's gonna be, uh, up and open by, by twenty, end of 2016, and that's this year. Thank you, Steve. Been out of the bag for a long time. Items eight is commercial building permits. We have none. Item nine is consent agenda. Mr. Jones, would you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Mayor, there are six items on the consent agenda for consideration by the council this evening. Item number one is approval of the February 1st mayor and council meeting minutes. Item number two is RFP 16-023. That's the Brentwood Drive storm drain replacement, be awarded to the lowest bidder, Tucker Grading and Hauling, 123,005, 123,503 dollars and 73 cents. Third item is award of RFQ 16-024 to Fouts Brothers Fire Equipment in the amount of 89,900 for the scheduled replacement of a heavy rescue vehicle. This is funded from the FY16 Vehicle Replacement Fund. The fourth item is approval of an Atkins Park Annual Crawfish Boil. Item five is approval of a 2016 St. Patrick's Day celebration. Both of these are in the Market Village. And finally, item six is approval to change the time for use of council chambers for Williams Park Neighborhood Annual Homeowners Association meeting to be held on Tuesday, February 23rd. It was originally scheduled from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. and it will now begin at 6:00 p.m.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 6-0. Item 10 is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Andrea Bluestein.
Um, thank you, sir. I have no report this evening.
Mr. Corky Welch.
I'm gonna continue the trend. No report this evening, Your Honor.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Uh, no report this evening. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Doug Stoner.
And, Mr. Mayor, I have no report either.
Mr., um, Ron Fennel.
No report, sir.
We, uh, Mr. Mike Jones, you got anything else?
Nothing to add.
Randy Edwards, our acting, well, he's part of the firm, our city attorney. Anything, Randy? Anything else? Terry Graham? Okay. Heather? Um, we do not have a, um, showcase hearing. Uh, we had a lot of people sign up for citizens' input. Before even, if there was somebody here, this, I've got a list of folks that signed up. If you're on this list, I'd be happy to let you speak. But at the beginning of every meeting, I always ask, and I had lunch the other day with this young man, he's running for, um, um, a judgeship, and I said, "If you come to the council meeting, you can go first," and, 'cause I always introduce the, give any candidate a chance to come up and say who they are. And, um, any candidate that's here now, they'd like to get up and say anything. I told you to keep it short, so let's see how he does. But we're glad that you're here. This was not really a typical council meeting, but, uh, thank you for waiting, so...
Well, thank you so much, uh, Mayor and, and council for taking, uh, the time to, to at least let me briefly address you, um, and the citizens of Smyrna. My name's Nathan Wade and I am running for Superior Court Judge here in Cobb County. Um, I just wanted to tell you why I'm the most qualified to hold this position. It's because I've practiced in every area that a Superior Court Judge will be called upon to render a decision. I've been a prosecutor, in fact, I've been a prosecutor right in this very courtroom for the citizens of Smyrna, um, and a defense lawyer, and then transitioned on into moving, um, moving domestic relations cases. And I am a municipal court judge in the city of Marietta as we speak. Thank you for hearing from me. Uh, the vote is May 24th and I ask for your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on up. Yes?
Thank you very much and good evening, Mr. Mayors, council members. My name is Kelly Hill and I'm a candidate for State Court Judge here in Cobb County. I'm looking to fill the seat that will be left vacant by, uh, State Court Judge Irma Glover when she retires at the end of the year. I am a 27-year Cobb County resident, started out living right here in Smyrna on Lake Park Drive and now live here in Cobb County where I've been for 27 years. Children were educated here, right down the street at Covenant Christian, uh, in the Presbyterian Church. I have been a lawyer for 25 years and in fact, 22 of those years were served as a prosecutor. I say I was on loan because I prosecuted in both Fulton and DeKalb Counties. I did major, uh, cases for both departments, including the Fulton County Courthouse shooting case where Brian Nichols was prosecuted and convicted, uh, along with the DeKalb County Schools District Corrupt Corruption case. I served as the Director of the Public Integrity Unit as well as the Chief Assistant District Attorney. So, I am definitely no stranger to the courtroom. I know the way the court should run. I am welcoming the opportunity to be elected by the citizens of Cobb County and to serve as Cobb County's new State Court Judge to bring my experience and my perspective here to Cobb County where I've called home for the last 27 years. Thank you all very much for your time and your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anybody, we've had a limited number of folks that are here, anybody that's here that wanted to say anything of this on this list? I'm not gonna read out all the names. Want to make any public comment? Okay. All right. If there's no other business to be brought forth this body, I declare this meeting adjourned at, I'll tell you exactly what time it is. 8:52. Bye.